It's Tuesday, December 2nd.
Could set us up for a tax increase into the future.
The projected tax increase is dropping as budget deliberations continue at City Hall. Mason will explain in a moment.
A lot of those issues don't exist there because it is right on the ocean.
The pipeline debate between Premier Smith and B.C. Premier E.B. continues. The latest coming up. And the 2026 FIFA match schedule set to drop this weekend. Downright balmy this morning.
Isn't it?
Yep.
It's nice. Two degrees right now in Wolf Willow and this is warmer than our average high. So we've already, we're already overachieving. Our school day forecast brought to you by the Alberta Teachers Association and we'll sit around that two-degree mark for the morning and then drop by the afternoon to minus one. Expect north wind. Also, some flurries are quite likely. I'll have more details on your forecast coming up in just a few minutes.
Thanks, Jody. Let's have a look at traffic. No incidents slowing things down, but the roads are icy in some spots. As for construction, median barrier work on McLeod Trail has closed the northbound left lane between Midlake Boulevard and Canyon Meadows Drive. This should wrap up by December 15th. And utility work has closed the right lane in all directions at Memorial and 39th Street. Southeast here's a live look at Glenmore and 14th Street in the southwest. Things moving well. With dozens of amendments on the table, the projected residential tax increase is coming down. Mason DePatty joins us from City Hall. Mason, how much has council managed to bring that tax increase down?
Well, Jefferson, council has already managed to cut it pretty significantly and they say it could go down even more. They started the week with a forecasted 5.8% increase, but a unanimous vote to cancel the planned tax shift from businesses to homes brought that down to 3.6%. Council then approved redirecting $50 million in investment income from reserves into the operating budget. That move pulls next year's projected tax hike down even further to 1.6% so far.
So the idea of earmarking the first $50 million in investment income to specific priorities around policing, around transit, around preventing root causes of crime, this is the prudent thing and the needed thing to do right. We could go all the way to 0%, but what it means is not funding the needed safety plans that Calgary has to do this on.
Some councillors are warning about using this investment income and how it could create pressure in future budgets, but there's still a long way to go. More than 30 amendments left to debate, including a $9 million transit security pilot and a $3 million plan to plan a YMCA in library in the West Village. So for now, Jefferson, the projected increase is just 1.6%, but that will likely change as councillors still have a lot of work to go.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Mason. LaCalry man has been found guilty of taking part in terrorist activities overseas. A judge ruling that Jamal Borhat traveled to Syria to fight with the Islamic State. Here's Terry Fikowski.
Jamal Borhat traveled to Syria to fight with ISIS for 11 months between 2013 and 2014, and on Monday, more than a decade later, was found guilty on three counts of participating in terrorist activities. The conviction comes five years after the now 35-year-old was charged after a lengthy and complicated international investigation.
Been a long process, a lot of work done by everybody. So just having a conclusion or most of a conclusion is definitely a good spot to be.
Justice Karina Dario says evidence shows Borhat took part in training, acts of violence, and leadership duties with a shared goal of creating an Islamic state. He was prepared to kill and die for his beliefs, she said in her decision. He used firearms with the intention to kill anyone who was non-Muslim. In 2022, his co-accused and cousin Hussein Borhat pled guilty in a separate trial and was sentenced to 12 years in prison.
The barbarity of the acts they've engaged in is incredibly troubling.
For this criminologist, the cases reflect Canada's struggles to address foreign fighter recruitment and radicalization. According to the RCMP, the number of terrorism-related charges in Canada jumped 488% in 2024.
Unfortunately, when you neglect border security, when you neglect national security, when you under-reserve your federal law enforcement and security services, this is what happens.
Court heard Borhat returned to Canada after being imprisoned in Syria for stealing medication. He's been out on bail for the past five years, but on Monday was taken into custody.
To say that the family and Mr. Borhat are anything but devastated by this ruling would be an understatement.
Three counts of participating in a terrorist activity each carry a maximum sentence of 10 years in prison and can be served consecutively. The Crown and Defence will return to court for sentencing arguments on January 16th. Terry Fikowski, CTV News, Calgary.
Calgary Police investigating a shooting in the southwest last night. Officers say just before 9:00 p.m., a single shot was fired into a home on 27th Avenue. The resident was at home at the time and was not injured. CPS say the shooting does not appear to be random. Anyone with information is asked to contact police or Crime Stoppers. And we are expecting to learn more today about the Alberta government's plan to fight Ottawa's gun buyback program. Over the weekend, Danielle Smith said her government will introduce a motion to defy the program. Ottawa's program bans hundreds of assault-style firearms and includes a voluntary buyback program. If passed, Smith says the Alberta government would instruct all provincial entities, including police agencies, to refuse to enforce or prosecute under the federal gun seizure program. Province is expected to outline its plan this afternoon. Well, pressure appears to be mounting for the premier to move a separatist agenda forward with some suggesting it's dividing her party. Hannah Lapina is in this morning. Hannah, what's the latest?
Well, Jefferson, this division is on such a fundamental question that it risks splitting the party back into a version of what it was before the wild rose and progressive conservatives merged under Jason Kenny. The issue of whether Alberta should remain in Canada dominated the UCP convention. The premier says she supports remaining inside Canada, but while asserting Alberta sovereignty.
I've always said my job is to tell people that Canada works and show them that it works and to get more people to understand that we can have our own sovereign areas of jurisdiction within a united Canada. So I got a little more work to do.
I would say that probably more than half of our membership actively support the idea of an independent Alberta.
Elections Alberta confirmed the Forever Canadian petition has been certified. Former Deputy Premier Thomas Lukasik collected more than 450,000 signatures. The petition proposal will go to the Legislative Assembly in the coming weeks, where a committee will make recommendations on what to do next. Options include treating it as a policy proposal or a referendum. And Premier Danielle Smith is also facing recall petitions approved against 14 UCP MLAs. She says there will be some changes to election legislation on Thursday. And the president of the Alberta Federation of Labor says the premier is making false accusations about him funding these petitions to justify potentially changing the Recall Act. He says the premier has only herself to blame for the recall petitions. And many of the people who started them point to the UCP's use of the notwithstanding clause. Jefferson, all 14 are still in the signature gathering stage.
Okay. Thanks, Hannah. Alberta Health Services is warning about measles exposure at the Calgary Airport. A person onboard a KLM flight on November 22nd was flying while infectious. The flight arrived in Calgary at 1:30 that afternoon. Exposure locations include international arrivals, customs and baggage claim. The infectious person also went to the Clare's Home Hospital on November 24th. Anyone who develops symptoms should call the measles hotline before going to any healthcare facility. Well, the teams of Brad Jacobs and Rachel Homan will represent Team Canada at the Olympics in February. That means another trophy on the shelf for Mark Kennedy. The St. Albert native is fresh off helping Team Jacobs clinch a spot at the Winter Olympics. Kennedy calls the St. Albert Curling Club home. This will be his fourth time wearing the maple leaf at the Winter Olympics.
We didn't just build this team to win the Olympic trials. We tried to build this team to win an Olympic gold medal. So this was another step in that direction and we'll try to play that well when we get to Cortina and try to bring it home.
Kennedy continues to help out the juniors at the St. Albert Curling Club. He has two months to prepare for the Games where he hopes to add another battle to his trophy case.
Well, good morning. We are waiting for some active weather to move into our region. Temperatures right now much warmer than what we would expect for an overnight value. Our average low is closer to minus 12. Average high is zero. And as you can see, we have some communities that are actually warmer than our average daytime high at this point, including in Wolf Willow where it's two degrees. Your rare chance to live on the Bow is here. Visit live@wolfwillow.ca. And we're looking at slightly cooler values toward the foothills. We have Bragg Creek at minus five and Cochrane at minus four. Some precipitation already starting to move in and we have it east of Calgary, southeast of Calgary, north of Calgary as well. And in the warm sectors, we're seeing this as more of a rain or a mixed precip. And that does include in two areas in the southeast corner of our province. However, that temperature is a little bit cooler now than it was a couple of hours ago, and so it is transitioning to snow. We have no weather warnings in place right now, nor should we. We're not looking at this being an unusually significant event, just typical wintery weather. And likely to see those flurries start up here in the mid to late morning. And again, not a lot of accumulation locally. We'll see some intermittent periods with that snowfall. At times, some communities may have that narrow band of snow, but I think that largely it's safe to say that we're expecting about one to two centimeters for today for our accumulations. And then temperatures remain above seasonal for tomorrow and Thursday before dropping down on Friday. We have about one to three centimeters possible gain on Friday. Your cheapest gas brought to you by Country Hills Toyota, home of free winter tires and free maintenance, your Toyota Giant. And your cheapest gas prices found on GasBuddy.com include 99.9 at the Tempo Station on Sun Valley Boulevard in the southeast. Stay with us. Coming up after the break, the five things you need to know, including a major layoff announcement that is being blamed on U.S. tariffs. We'll have those details after the break.
Here are the five things you need to know for today.
When I look at Port-au-Prince Rupert, a lot of those issues don't exist there because it is right on the ocean.
The conversation about a new pipeline to the West Coast continues. Premier Smith suggesting the expansion of the Prince Rupert port makes sense. Smith comments come after B.C. Premier David E.B. said he would be open to a potential pipeline from Alberta to the B.C. coast, but only if the tanker ban remains in place. The federal government also reiterating that it won't override the rights of indigenous groups. The coastal First Nations have already opposed the project going through their land. And First Nations chiefs will hear from Prime Minister Carney today. The E.P.M. will be speaking at an assembly of First Nations meeting in Ottawa. He is expected to face questions about the pipeline deal with Alberta. Other senior cabinet members are also expected to address First Nations chiefs during their three-day gathering this week.
Had the opportunity to be a minister for about six years and now another opportunity. So it feels great. I am a guy that likes to be busy.
Mark Miller has been promoted back to the front bench as part of a cabinet shuffle by Prime Minister Carney. Miller served in cabinet under former Prime Minister Trudeau. He will become the Minister of Canadian Identity and Culture and the Minister responsible for official languages. Former Minister Steven Givaud resigned from cabinet after Ottawa announced its energy deal with our province.
It's very devastating when you live in a community that doesn't have a lot of job opportunities and you're finding out that your job is going to end.
Algoma Steel will lay off 1,000 workers, more than a third of its workforce. The company is blaming U.S. tariffs. Algoma Steel is based in Sault Ste. Marie. It has been hit hard by the 50% tariffs imposed last summer. A majority of its buyers are in the U.S. It says the tariffs have forced them to accelerate plans to shut down some operations a year earlier than planned. And FIFA will reveal the match schedule for next summer's World Cup in a live global broadcast on Saturday for the first time at a World Cup draw. The venues and kickoff times for all 104 matches won't be released on the same day we learn the groups. Instead, FIFA is placing the games in the best location based on the time zones. FIFA says the post-draw game allocation process is meant to create optimal conditions for players and fans. On Friday, a draw will determine the World Cup's 12 groups of four. You can watch that on TSN starting at 8:00 a.m.
A collective sigh of relief on Bay and Wall Streets after Nvidia delivered a surprisingly strong revenue forecast and pushed back on the idea that the AI industry is in a bubble, easing concerns that had spread across the tech sector. The world's most valuable company expects sales of about $65 billion in the January quarter, roughly $3 billion more than analysts predicted. Nvidia also said that a half-trillion-dollar revenue bonanza due in coming quarters may be even bigger than anticipated. Well, Canada is going to start negotiations with the UAE on a comprehensive economic partnership agreement. It would cut tariffs, remove trade barriers, and expand market access to Canadian exporters while helping facilitate UAE investment into major projects in Canada, including data centers and critical minerals. The UAE is one of Canada's top trading partners in the Middle East and Northern Africa. Prime Minister Mark Carney has been pushing to strengthen ties around the world as part of the trade war with the U.S. Those are your morning business headlines for B&amp;M Bloomberg. I'm Roger Peterson.
Good morning. Just taking a look at our downtown skyline with our SkyWatch weather camera brought to you by Action Furnace. Fixed rate or it's free. And this is a live shot facing east from on top of our building here at CTV Calgary. We are expecting a daytime high that will be above seasonal. Two degrees is that forecast high. And zero is the average. 14.4 is the record temperature. We're not going to see that. And then sunrise occurring at 8:19 today. Plus one is our current temperature. We do have some precipitation in parts of the province, including around the capital region. Plus one in Edmonton, looking at one in Medicine Hat, zero in Lethbridge. And you can see that mix, that rain-snow mix just tracking through the central region of our province. And then we have that mix along the Alberta-B.C. border into northern Alberta and B.C. And then we have a little bit of snowfall still into the southernmost regions. As far as the snow depth, the snow still on the ground, a lot of it still in those higher elevations west of our city and into the B.C. interior, up through the Prince George area. We're not seeing as much on the Alberta-Saskatchewan border east of Calgary and north of the TransCanada Highway. And our likelihood of more snow over the next 24 hours. We'll see some isolated flurries today, starting in the mid to late morning, continuing through to the evening. And then Lethbridge, a pretty similar story, but not quite as many flurries. And then looking at even less of a chance than we will have. As far as the temperatures, plus one in Kamloops today, minus one in Fernie, about five degrees in Kelowna. We've one for forecast high in Edmonton and much cooler in Fort McMurray at minus 10. Three, as you're heading down the TransCanada, pardon me, down the QE2. So three degrees in Olds, two degrees here with those scattered flurries and plus one for Lethbridge. We will start to cool off as we go from Friday into Saturday. And then looking at Sunday resuming that more seasonal value for a daytime high, three degrees for Monday and two degrees for Tuesday. Overnight values staying above seasonal, but still below freezing for most of the next five days. And a beautiful photo sent in from our friend RJ DeRosa brought to you by Lux Windows and Doors, crafting quality windows and doors for your style, budget, and Alberta's climate. If you have a photo you would like to share, you can text it to us at 10-400. This one from Cheadle from the other day and a gorgeous picture captured by RJ.
All right. What's the worst thing you've left in the laundry?
Oh, gosh. Like as in for too long or for other people to find?
As in like you've left it in your pockets and you've washed it by accident?
Lip balm, always. Always happens.
Not as bad as this.
I think I just cooked an entire bag of pasta in my washing machine. I forgot that we stored the bag of pasta that we just bought from Italy in our dirty clothes bag to keep it safe.
Oh, no.
So it's cooked and at some point we'll see the shot of like the back of the machine. So not only is it in all these clothes,
Oh, my gosh.
But it is caked
Oh, no.
On the back of this machine. I learned a new one that you shouldn't do.
Oh.
You know how sometimes in hockey with the jerseys, if you have rotating assistants, you do the As with the hockey tape? If you wash the jerseys with the hockey tape As on there, they get glued right on there.
Oh, no.
And you can take the tape off.
But the A stays. So you're all an A.
Everybody's an A.
You're all an assistant.
You're an A and you're an A.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
Oh, this is...
Yeah, all that nice pasta from Italy. Cooked up. All right. If you have videos you'd like to submit for sidebar, email them to yourmorningcalgary@ctv.ca. It's Tuesday, December 2nd.
Could set us up for a tax increase into the future.
The projected tax increase is dropping as budget deliberations continue at City Hall. Mason will explain in a moment.
A lot of those issues don't exist there because it is right on the ocean.
The pipeline debate between Premier Smith and B.C. Premier E.B. continues. The latest coming up. And the 2026 World Cup schedule set to drop this weekend. Welcome to your morning, Calgary. Nice start to the day, but we've got a little snow moving in.
We do, yeah. About mid-morning is when we're expecting it here in Calgary. We are seeing some of it north and south of our city right now. But you wouldn't know it if you take a look at this shot and this temperature. We have plus one at the airport, a northwest wind of nine kilometers per hour. And we are anticipating that we'll reach that two degrees. We've already hit it once, but we'll reach two degrees and then drop down in the afternoon. I'll have more details in a few minutes.
Thanks, Jody. Let's have a look at traffic. Lots of green on the screen indicating fast travel speeds. No incidents on the go. As for construction, utility work has closed southbound 8th Street between 7th and 8th Avenues in the southwest with two-way traffic on the east side. That should wrap up by December 12th. Here's a live look at Deerfoot and Glenmore. You can see everything moving well. Like potential residential tax hike is coming down as city council works through next year's budget. Mason DePatty joins us from City Hall. Mason, how much has it dropped?
Well, Jefferson, councillors were working here late last night until around 9:30 to discuss how to trim the budget and bring that property tax hike down. So far, they've cut it pretty significantly. They say they could bring it down even more.
focusing on authorities and more importantly, we're not risking the future going concern of the city of Calgary.
Council began the week with a forecasted 5.8% property tax increase. Unanimous vote to cancel the planned tax shift from businesses to homes brought that down to 3.6%. Council then approved redirecting $50 million in investment income from reserves into the operating budget, lowering the projected hike to just 1.6%. But some worry that pulling money away from the reserves could set the city up for a bigger jump in future years.
If that were not to materialize into the future, if we allocate too much of our positive variance towards the base budget, it could set us up for a tax increase into the future.
And Jefferson, despite that long day yesterday, there's still a long way to go with more than 30 amendments still to be debated, including a $9 million pilot for more transit security during rush hour and $3 million to plan a new YMCA in library in West Village.
Okay. Thanks, Mason. Calgary Police investigating a shooting in the southwest last night. Officers say just before 9:00 p.m., a single shot was fired into a home on 27th Avenue. The resident was at home at the time and was not injured. CPS say the shooting does not appear to be random. Anyone with information is asked to contact police or Crime Stoppers. A semi flipping on southbound Stony Trail near Glenmore. This happened just after 8 o'clock last night. Emergency crews took one adult to the Foothills Hospital in serious but non-life-threatening condition. There is no word yet on what led to the collision. A cat died in a fire in Panorama Hills while two other cats were rescued. No people were hurt in the fire. Crews arrived to heavy smoke and flames at around 2:00 yesterday afternoon. This is on Panamoune Heights Northwest. No word yet on the extent of damage to the homes involved. Investigators are still determining a cause, but say it appears the fire started on the outside of the homes. A new commission that will oversee complaints made against police officers is now fully operational. And already there are questions about who makes up the commission and how it will work. Gates-Goren reports.
The province calls it a new era in police oversight.
By creating this independent civilian-led body, we're setting a new standard, one that puts fairness and integrity at the heart of the law enforcement in Alberta.
Complaints against police filed by Albertans will now be received and investigated by the new Police Review Commission. These complaints can range from noncriminal misconduct to cases involving serious injury or death.
With this new model, Albertans can be confident investigations will be handled fairly and impartially.
Investigations were previously handled by individual police agencies, which, according to one retired police inspector, caused a rift in public perception.
And I think that's the goal is to try to expand on or have at least significantly more police legitimacy and the police not investigating the police.
Dan Jones says calls for more civilian oversight and transparency have been made for quite some time, and a civilian-led commission should help that. But he has questions about who will be a part of it.
Who are they? Are they former police officers that served in the agencies in which they are investigating? And then is that actually changing anything? And I think that's where the public will be like, well, you're not actually changing it. You're just changing the name of it.
The commission emphasizes independence, but believe experience is crucial.
You can rely upon their investigative expertise, but at that same time, make sure that we're truly not having police ultimately investigating police and making the final conclusions.
The commission is mandated to finish investigations within 180 days. Complaints can now be filed on the commission's website. Gates-Goren, CTV News, Edmonton.
Well, pressure appears to be mounting for the premier to move a separatist agenda forward with some suggesting it's dividing her party. Hannah Lapina is in this morning. Hannah, what's the latest?
Jefferson, this division is on such a fundamental question that it risks splitting the party back into a version of what it was before the wild rose and progressive conservatives merged under Jason Kenny. The issue of whether Alberta should remain in Canada dominated the UCP convention. The premier says she supports remaining inside Canada, but while asserting Alberta sovereignty.
I've always said my job is to tell people that Canada works and show them that it works and to get more people to understand that we can have our own sovereign areas of jurisdiction within a united Canada. So I got a little more work to do.
She keeps using the phrase sovereign Alberta and a united Canada because that seems to appeal to both sides. But at a certain point, she's going to have to pick a side.
The debate further intensified on Monday after elections Alberta confirmed the Forever Canadian petition has been certified. Former Deputy Premier Thomas Lukasik collected more than 450,000 signatures. The petition proposal will go to the Legislative Assembly in the coming weeks, where a committee will make recommendations on what to do next. Options include treating it as a policy proposal or a referendum. Premier Danielle Smith is also facing recall petitions approved against 14 UCP MLAs. She says there will be some changes to election legislation on Thursday. And many of the people who started the recall petitions point to the UCP's use of the notwithstanding clause. Jefferson, all 14 are still in the signature gathering stage.
Okay. Thanks, Hannah. Prime Minister Carney did a small shuffle to his cabinet yesterday after Steven Givaud resigned over a disagreement in climate policy. And Carney is bringing back a familiar face from the Trudeau era. Here's Judy Trin.
The prime minister has decided to divide Steven Givaud's previous responsibilities between three ministers. The biggest surprise was the return of a new old face. Mark Miller is returning to the inner circle after being dropped from cabinet after Mark Carney's election. Miller was a loyal supporter of Justin Trudeau, but has now been appointed Minister of Canadian Culture and Identity, as well as the Minister responsible for official languages.
It feels great. I am a guy that likes to be busy. And so, you know, I was a little restless, but it's nice to get the opportunity to keep on doing some amazing work and contributing to Canada, like for the reasons that I got into politics, because I love my country.
Current Minister for Transformation of the Public Service and Procurement, Joel Lightbound, takes on the additional role of Quebec Lieutenant. Here's what he said after he was sworn in.
I'll just say that I'm honored by the trust bestowed on me by the prime minister. It's an important role in federal politics and in Quebec politics, and I look forward to getting to it.
Also, the current Minister of the Environment and Climate Change, Julie DeBruson, takes on the additional role of Minister for Nature. She takes on responsibility for national parks. All three ministers involved in this shuffle were first elected in 2015. Judy Trin, CTV News, Ottawa.
Today is Giving Tuesday, and organizations across Alberta are asking for support. Giving Tuesday is a global day of generosity that happens after Black Friday and Cyber Monday. The Alberta Sports Hall of Fame is asking for donations so it can continue to preserve sport history and keep its programs accessible.
I don't think a lot of people necessarily realize that the Alberta Sports Hall of Fame is actually a registered charity. And so that means we need donations throughout the year to keep us afloat.
Officials say the donations will help the Hall of Fame expand its outreach program where staff visit local schools and educate children about different sports. Well, stay with us. Jody has a look at the five-day forecast, plus we'll get a business update.
Good morning. We're just taking a look at our warmer values for our overnight temperatures, including two degrees in Wolf Willow. Calgary's tallest slide is coming in 2026. Visit Wolf Willow to experience it. Plus one at the airport. We have minus five in Bragg Creek. Our Paul Ackerman Real Estate Dog Walking Forecast. This little cutie is Pete Lab, who Pete's human says is probably a husky disguised as a lab, loves the winter so much. So Pete is very excited about this weather, including some of that fresh snow for is very excited about this weather, including some of that fresh snow for today. And if you have a picture of your pooch, you can text it to us at 10-400. And we are expecting more flurry activity today. We're seeing some of it already near Calgary. Just north of us, we have some rain in that warmer sector, and then some light flurries, as you can see, traveling along the corridor, mostly to the west of the QE2 as it gets closer to Calgary, but on both sides of the QE2 near Red Deer. And then seeing that mixed precipip into the south and exiting our province along the TransCanada, as well as you're heading toward Medicine Hat. We're not talking about a lot of precipitation, though, and that's the good thing. We have those flurries intermittent and scattered throughout the day today, expected in our city. It will be a bit more of a narrow band as we get into the afternoon and the evening. So at times, it might feel like you're getting a lot of snow, but it should be short-lived. And then we are going to see more accumulation or heavier accumulations into areas west of our city, as well as along the QE2 for Thursday. And then by Friday, we might see a little more of that snowfall here in our city. Two degrees for today, plus one for tomorrow, four on Thursday, and then minus six on Friday.
Here are the five things you need to know for today.
When I look at Port-au-Prince Rupert, a lot of those issues don't exist there because it is right on the ocean.
The conversation about a new pipeline to the West Coast continues. Premier Smith suggesting the expansion of the Prince Rupert Port makes sense. Miss comments come after B.C. Premier David Eby said he would be open to a potential pipeline from Alberta to the B.C. coast, but only if the tanker ban remains in place. The federal government also reiterating that it won't override the rights of indigenous groups. The coastal First Nations have already opposed the project going through their land. And First Nations chiefs will hear from Prime Minister Carney today. The PM will be speaking at an Assembly of First Nations meeting in Ottawa. He is expected to face questions about the pipeline deal with Alberta. Other senior cabinet members are also expected to address First Nations chiefs during their three-day gathering this week.
Had the opportunity to be a minister for about six years, and now another opportunity. So it feels great. I am a guy that likes to be busy.
Mark Miller has been promoted back to the front bench as part of a cabinet shuffle by Prime Minister Carney. Miller served in cabinet under former Prime Minister Trudeau. He will become the Minister of Canadian Identity and Culture and the Minister responsible for official languages. Former Minister Stephen Givaud resigned from cabinet after Ottawa announced its energy deal with our province.
It's very devastating when you live in a community that doesn't have a lot of job opportunities and you're finding out that your job is going to end.
Algoa Steel will lay off 1,000 workers, more than a third of its workforce. The company is blaming U.S. tariffs. Algoa Steel is based in Sault Ste. Marie. It has been hit hard by the 50% tariffs imposed last summer. A majority of its buyers are in the U.S. It says the tariffs have forced them to accelerate plans to shut down some operations a year earlier than planned. And FIFA will reveal the match schedule for next summer's World Cup in a live global broadcast on Saturday for the first time at a World Cup draw. The venues and kickoff times for all 104 matches won't be released on the same day we learn the groups. Instead, FIFA is placing the games in the best location based on the time zones. FIFA says the post-draw game allocation process is meant to create optimal conditions for players and fans. On Friday, a draw will determine the World Cup's 12 groups of four. You can watch that on TSN starting at 8:00 a.m. And if you have a news tip that you would like to share, you can text us at 10-400.
Good morning. Just looking at our downtown with our SkyWatch Weather Camera, brought to you by Action Furnace, Fix Right or It's Free. And this is a live shot facing west with our camera, just off of Deerfoot Trail. And you can see some good visibility there. Today's forecast high, two degrees. Our average is zero. And then that record 14.4. And we're not worrying about those record temperatures. As I mentioned, visibility is good. And then we backed it up quantitatively with the numbers at the airport, unlimited visibility there, unlimited visibility in Lethbridge and in Medicine Hat, and looking at about 14.4 kilometers north in Red Deer. Across the country, temperatures are fairly mild. We have minus three in southern Saskatchewan, a little colder in southern Manitoba, minus 12, and minus 11 in Ottawa, minus six in Montreal, minus two in Toronto. We are looking at some precipitation that's cutting up along the eastern coast and into portions of southern Ontario, southern Quebec, and into our maritime provinces. And then some precipitation impacting us as well here in Alberta, where we're looking at that mixed precipip transitioning to snow because we do have a warmer temperature profile within our atmosphere. Two degrees is our forecast high here in Calgary, plus one in Edmonton, seven along our coastline and the west side of our country. But this is the reason why we have those cooler values in parts of southern Saskatchewan, Manitoba, where we have this polar vortex, quite large, obviously, a cold air mass. And it's much further to the south than we like it. We like to see it up toward the pole. And it's going to only continue to impact us throughout the region as we have it circling through in that counterclockwise rotation and then spreading out back into the Pacific Basin once we get into the weekend. Two degrees for our high for today, and then plus one for tomorrow. We're looking at some flurries, intermittent flurries or scattered flurries today, and then we'll do that again on Friday.
Calgary's number one hit music station.
98.5 Virgin Radio.
And it is time to check in with our friends at Virgin Radio and Fuzzy and Tyler with us this morning. You guys had an epic photo shoot just recently.
And some things need to be seen before they are given context. And this is one of them, Jody. This is Team Virgin Radio stacking up, in some cases, doing a great family photo shoot at the Walmart Portrait Center, McLeod Trail South. Big shout out to Maria. Had us all posed up and doing all kinds of stuff there, Fuzzy.
Yeah, absolutely, she did. And let me tell you, when it comes to team bonding, if you're working in an office, if you've got your friends, you've got a sports team, whatever, you want to get everybody together, hey, say to somebody, say, we're going to put on black turtlenecks, maybe throw in a gold necklace, go out of the rock, and let's do a photo shoot. It truly is absurd, but I got to tell you, it was super, super fun, Jody.
I have done this with my daughter's soccer team when we did a minute-to-win-it challenge. I handed them all some of these awkward family photos and gave them, you know, quick pull-off three. And of course, that generation, it was instant. It wasn't not saying you guys took your time with this, but...
Yeah, it was all slow at times, slow at times.
I thought this was done, you know, I didn't realize you went to a professional studio. This poor person, this, who was it that was your photographer?
Her name was Maria. She was fantastic and very understanding of all the strange jokes that happened, especially as I was trying to find a way to tastefully mount Fuzzy there in that last photo as we made a bit of a human pyramid or stack of some kind.
Yeah.
It did look tasteful, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Things happened that day that we probably shouldn't talk about.
Oh, look at that, guys, we're out of time. Thank you so much. Great photos, yes.
Calgary's number one hit music station.
98.5 Virgin Radio.
The Virgin Morning Chat, brought to you by Vantage Rise, Airdrie's newest community. Homes are now pre-selling.
It's Giving Tuesday, and I'm at Telespark Science Centre, joined by Amber, who's the Director of Advancement, and Guy Labine, who is the newest CEO. Now, Amber, tell us about the campaign that's happening today.
Yeah, so it's Giving Tuesday. And Telespark, as a registered educational charity, all of the money that we raise, both through our programming, but also through our fundraising, is reinvested back into science education, which is incredibly important. And today on Giving Tuesday, we actually have a really exciting matching gift. Thanks to the Pitts County Robertson Family Foundation, they're matching donations today up to $7,500. And so by raising $15,000, we're going to ensure that 125 Calgary families that might not otherwise be able to access the centre have access to our programming and education, which is super important.
It is. And of course, that's a really important part of what it is that you do. But also, that type of community support really allows you to bring those innovations and creative ideas to life.
That's correct. The Astronaut Eastern Cafe that we're sitting in right now was actually funded as part of Phase One of our Keep Calgary Curious campaign, along with upgrades to our Dome Theatre, which all of our Dome Theatre shows are included in the price of admission, and our Digital Immersion Gallery, which is a first of its kind for science centres in Canada. And that's where we're featuring Goodnight Moon right now. So investing in the centre, investing in the visitor experience is a big part of why we fundraise.
It sure is. And Guy, you're one month into your new job here in Calgary. Welcome. But you do have a long history of heading up science centres across North America. And you know how important this type of funding is to what it is that you do.
This day is critically important to us. Philanthropy is an important part of how we fund our operations. You know, for 60 years, Telespark Science Centre has been engaging exciting curiosity in our audiences that we serve. We couldn't do it without this type of funding. Last year alone, 40,000 visitors were able to come either through discounted or free admissions. And the ability for us to secure funding from donors and organisations through this day is critically important. So I appreciate it.
Yeah. And so you'll want to take part in Giving Tuesday. You can do so by visiting Telespark Science Centre today in person, or you can donate online at sparkscience.ca.
It's Tuesday, December 2nd.
Could set us up for a tax increase into the future.
The projected tax increase is dropping as budget deliberations continue at City Hall. Mason will explain in a moment.
A lot of those issues don't exist there because it is right on the ocean.
The pipeline debate between Premier Smith and B.C. Premier Eby continues. The latest coming up. And the 2026 World Cup schedule set to drop this weekend. And welcome to your morning, Calgary. Already have some snow falling in some parts of the province, and it's coming here.
Yes, we are looking at it moving through Calgary today, late morning, well, mid to late morning, and then off and on throughout the day, minus one, or pardon me, plus one in Wolf Willow, our school day forecast, brought to you by the Alberta Teachers Association. And we'll see temperatures around one to two degrees for the start of the morning. Winds out of the northwest at up to 20 kilometers per hour. By the afternoon, we're looking at more sustained north winds of 20 to 40 kilometers per hour, and those flurries continuing with our temperature dropping down. I'll have more details coming up in just a moment.
Thanks, Jody. Let's have a look at traffic. No incidents slowing things down. Travel speeds are fast. We are starting to see some slowdowns on northbound Deerfoot in the southeast. As for construction, median barrier work on McLeod Trail has closed. The northbound left lane between Midlake Boulevard and Canyon Meadows Drive, that should wrap up by December 15th. Here's a live look at Deerfoot and 32nd Avenue in the northeast. Well, with dozens of amendments on the table, the projected residential tax increase is coming down. Mason DePatty joins us from City Hall. Mason, how much has council managed to bring that tax increase down?
Well, Jefferson, after another long day of trying to trim the budget down, councillors have managed to cut it significantly. And they say they're not done yet. They started the week with a 5.8% property tax increase forecasted. A unanimous vote to cancel the planned tax shift from businesses to homes brought that down to 3.6%, though. Then council approved redirecting $50 million in investment income from reserves into the operating budget. That move pulls next year's projected tax hike down even further to 1.6%.
So the idea of earmarking the first $50 million in investment income to specific priorities around policing, around transit, around preventing root causes of crime, this is the prudent thing and the needed thing to do right now. We could go all the way to 0%, but what it means is not funding the needed safety improvements that Calgarians have told us are important right now.
Now, some on council worry using the investment income could create pressure in future budgets. Either way, there's still a long way to go with more than 30 amendments left to debate, including a $9 million transit security pilot and $3 million to plan a YMCA and library in the West Village. So for now, Jefferson, with all these changes from council, we're sitting at about a 1.2% property tax increase right now. But again, that could change with a long way to go.
Right. Okay, thanks, Mason. A Calgary man has been found guilty of taking part in terrorist activities overseas. A judge ruling that Jamal Borhat traveled to Syria to fight with the Islamic State. Here's Terry Fikowski.
Jamal Borhat traveled to Syria to fight with ISIS for 11 months between 2013 and 2014. And on Monday, more than a decade later, was found guilty on three counts of participating in terrorist activities. The conviction comes five years after the now 35-year-old was charged after a lengthy and complicated international investigation.
Been a long process, a lot of work done by everybody. So just having a conclusion or most of a conclusion is definitely a good spot to be.
Justice Karina Dario says evidence shows Borhat took part in training, acts of violence, and leadership duties with a shared goal of creating an Islamic state. He was prepared to kill and die for his beliefs, she said in her decision. He used firearms with the intention to kill anyone who was non-Muslim. In 2022, his co-accused and cousin, Hussein Borhat, pled guilty in a separate trial and was sentenced to 12 years in prison.
The barbarity of the acts they've engaged in is incredibly troubling.
For this criminologist, the cases reflect Canada's struggles to address foreign fighter recruitment and radicalization. According to the RCMP, the number of terrorism-related charges in Canada jumped 488% in 2024.
Unfortunately, when you neglect border security, when you neglect national security, when you under-resource your federal law enforcement and security services, this is what happens.
Court heard Borhat returned to Canada after being imprisoned in Syria for stealing medication. He's been out on bail for the past five years, but on Monday was taken into custody.
To say that the family and Mr. Borhat are anything but devastated by this ruling would be an understatement.
Three counts of participating in a terrorist activity each carry a maximum sentence of 10 years in prison and can be served consecutively. The Crown and Defence will return to court for sentencing arguments on January 16th. Terry Fikowski, CTV News, Calgary.
Calgary Police are investigating a shooting in the southwest last night. Officers say just before 9:00 p.m., a single shot was fired into a home on 27th Avenue. The resident was at home at the time, but was not injured. CPS says the shooting does not appear to be random. Anyone with information is asked to contact police or Crime Stoppers. And we're expecting to learn more today about the Alberta government's plan to fight Ottawa's gun buyback program. Over the weekend, Danielle Smith said her government will introduce a motion to defy the program. Ottawa's program bans hundreds of assault-style firearms and includes a voluntary buyback program if passed. Smith says the Alberta government will instruct all provincial entities, including police agencies, to refuse to enforce or prosecute under the federal gun seizure program. The province is expected to outline its plan this afternoon. Well, pressure appears to be mounting for the premier to move a separatist agenda forward, with some suggesting it's dividing her party. Hannah Lapina is in this morning. Hannah, what's the latest?
Well, Jefferson, some say this division is on such a fundamental question that it risks splitting the party back into the version of what it was before the Wildrose and Progressive Conservatives merged under Jason Kenny. The issue of whether Alberta should remain in Canada dominated the UCP convention. The premier says she supports remaining inside Canada, but while asserting Alberta sovereignty.
I've always said my job is to tell people that Canada works and show them that it works and to get more people to understand that we can have our own sovereign areas of jurisdiction within a united Canada. So I've got a little more work to do.
I would say that probably more than half of our membership actively support the idea of an independent Alberta.
The debate further intensified on Monday after elections. Alberta confirmed the Forever Canadian petition has been certified. Former Deputy Premier Thomas Lukasik collected more than 450,000 signatures. The petition proposal will go to the Legislative Assembly in the coming weeks, where a committee will make recommendations on what to do next. Options include treating it as a policy proposal or a referendum. Premier Danielle Smith is also facing recall petitions approved against 14 UCP MLAs. She says there will be some changes to election legislation on Thursday. And many of the people who started these recall petitions point to the UCP's use of the notwithstanding clause. Jefferson, all 14 are still in the signature gathering stage.
Okay, thanks, Hannah. Alberta Health Services warning about measles exposure at the Calgary Airport. A person onboard a KLM flight on November 22nd was flying while infectious. The flight arrived in Calgary at 1:30 that afternoon. Exposure locations include international arrivals, customs, and baggage claim. The infectious person also went to the Clare's Home Hospital on November 24th. Anyone who develops symptoms should call the measles hotline before going to any healthcare facility. Well, an animal unique to Canada is making a comeback, thanks in part to Calgary Zoo's conservation program. The Vancouver Island marmot population was below 2 dozen. Now it's over 400. Here's Andy Garland.
Sibling rivalry is a part of growing up for these two Vancouver Island marmots.
They're really rambunctious. They're a lot of fun to watch in the wild. And then they'll stop, and they'll go, and they'll boop noses, which is a pair bonding activity.
They're two of 427 Vancouver Island marmots that are in the wild today.
The early recovery plans that were drafted, 400 was the dream, right? That was, that was sort of the initial kind of target. That was the goal.
It's taken the Marmot Recovery Foundation more than two decades to reach the 400 milestone.
The perspective that we try and take is, you know, when we started this program, we could find 22. we could find 22. That was how many marmots we had left in the wild.
The foundation says that the most effective and strongest tool for population growth has been the captive breeding program they do alongside the Calgary Zoo's Wilder Institute, as well as the Toronto Zoo.
It's important to recognize that when a, when a population gets down to so few individuals out in the wild, it's really unlikely that they're going to recover without human intervention.
It's unbelievable. Without the efforts of all of the partners and without excedu breeding for release into the wild, I can almost guarantee you that the Vancouver Island marmot would be extinct.
Even though they're seeing good reproduction numbers, all parties agree the marmots are not out of the woods yet, and more work still needs to be done.
Pup surviving to adulthood. I think we still have a bit of work left to go on that front. The other thing we want to see is good dispersal. So marmots moving around between colonies.
The foundation adds that all the work being done to bring back the Vancouver Island marmot from the brink of extinction is all because of donations from Canadians wanting to see this made in Canada species thrive. Andy Garland, CTV News.
Well, good morning. We have some mild temperatures for this time of the day. Minus five in Brad Creek, minus four in Cochrane, looking at plus one in Wolf Willow. Enjoy winter walks along the Bow River and Fish Creek. Visit Wolf Willow and seeing that precipitation entering in toward the Calgary area now, as well as exiting out the southern regions and some mixed precip north of us. So where we have warmer pockets of air, we're seeing it as a mixed precip, where it's a little cooler or close to that freezing mark as that precipitation is falling, then that, of course, would be snowfall. No weather warnings in place right now. When we look across southern Alberta, we do have that stronger gradient for our wind moving from the north toward the southeast corner of Alberta, and that's what we're expecting today. A more northerly direction, about 20 to 40 kilometers per hour, with more of that light and scattered flurry activity expected. And this will peak for us around the supper hour, continuing into the evening. But even still, our peak is considered to be more of scattered flurry activity. Lethbridge similar to us. Banff not expecting as much precipitation. And when we add in our temperatures, two degrees for that forecast high today, and technically we've already reached it, but we will probably see that again. And then plus one for tomorrow, four degrees on Thursday, minus six for Friday. Your cheapest gas this morning, brought to you by Country Hills Toyota, home of free winter tires and free maintenance. Your Toyota giant. And your cheapest gas prices found on gasbuddy.com include 105.9 at the Circle K on Soraco Drive in the southwest. It is time now for our Milestones segment. Today is December 2nd, which is also National Mutt Day. So a very happy day to both of my pups. We want to say a happy seventh birthday to Harper, love from Mom, Dad, and Eva. Happy 21st birthday to Jenna, love Mom, Dad, Aiden, Murphy, and Callie. And the princess of pop, Britney Spears, turns 44 today. She rose to fame in the late 1990s, first as a cast member on the all-new Mickey Mouse Club, and then emerging as a pop phenom with hits like "Baby One More Time," "Oops, I Did It Again," and then going on to become one of the best-selling and most influential artists of her generation. And we know she watches. If someone you know will be celebrating a milestone, a birthday, graduation, anniversary, whatever it might be, send us a photo at least two days in advance. Tell us who we are honoring and why. You can send that to calgriemilestones@ctv.ca or just scan the QR code on your screen.
Milestones brought to you by VacaVa, inclusion for everyone. VacaVa, supporting people with disabilities.
Here are the five things you need to know for today.
When I look at Port-au-Prince Rupert, a lot of those issues don't exist there because it is right on the ocean.
The conversation about a new pipeline to the West Coast continues. Premier Smith suggesting the expansion of the Prince Rupert port makes sense. Smith's comments come after B.C. Premier David E.B. said he would be open to a potential pipeline from Alberta to the B.C. coast, but only if the tanker ban remains in place. The federal government also reiterating that it won't override the rights of indigenous groups. The coastal First Nations have already opposed the project going through their land. And First Nations chiefs will hear from Prime Minister Carney today. The E.P.M. will be speaking at an assembly of First Nations meeting in Ottawa. He is expected to face questions about the pipeline deal with Alberta. Other senior cabinet members are also expected to address First Nations chiefs during their three-day gathering this week.
Had the opportunity to be a minister for about six years, and now another opportunity. So it feels great. I am a guy that likes to be busy.
Mark Miller has been promoted back to the front bench as part of a cabinet shuffle by Prime Minister Carney. Miller served in cabinet under former Prime Minister Trudeau. He will become the Minister of Canadian Identity and Culture and the Minister responsible for official languages. Former Minister Stephen Givaud resigned from cabinet after Ottawa announced its energy deal with our province.
It's very devastating when you live in a community that doesn't have a lot of job opportunities, and you're finding out that your job is going to end.
Algoa Steel will lay off 1,000 workers, more than a third of its workforce. The company is blaming U.S. tariffs. Algoa Steel is based in Sault Ste. Marie. It has been hit hard by the 50% tariffs imposed last summer. A majority of its buyers are in the U.S. It says the tariffs have forced them to accelerate plans to shut down some operations a year earlier than planned. And FIFA will reveal the match schedule for next summer's World Cup in a live global broadcast on Saturday. For the first time at a World Cup draw, the venues and kickoff times for all 104 matches won't be released on the same day we learn the groups. Instead, FIFA is placing the games in the best location based on the time zones. FIFA says the post-draw game allocation process is meant to create optimal conditions for players and fans. On Friday, a draw will determine the World Cup's 12 groups of four. You can watch that on TSN starting at 8 a.m.
It's Giving Tuesday, and this morning I'm at Trail Appliances, presenting sponsor of CTV's Toy Mountain campaign in support of Fear is Not Love. And I'm joined now by Alison, who is the Chief Development Officer of Fear is Not Love. And Alison, for Giving Tuesday, the donations that are coming in really get stretched.
They sure do. This Giving Tuesday, we've had an extraordinary group of donors here in Calgary who've pledged gifts that will be used to match donations coming in from Calgarians throughout the day.
Yeah. So we really need your help to make this year's Toy Mountain the biggest yet. So keep the donations coming in. You can always donate online on our website. But let's talk a little bit about the impact of this type of effort.
What's fantastic about Giving Tuesday is that it's a global movement of generosity. And so it really encourages individuals to give whatever size of donation is meaningful to them. It's, these are gifts that typically we can direct to area of greatest need. And so it gives us so much flexibility, especially at this time of year, when we may have, our clients may need shelter, they may need counseling, children may need additional items for the winter season. And this extraordinary push for donations really, really helps us to deliver that kind of impact that Calgary, Calgaryans have come to know Fear is Not Love for.
And that's right. The Calgary Women's Emergency Shelter is consistently full. And so that type of need is something that you see not just through the holidays, throughout the whole year. And more recently, you've put a focus on imminent risk. Walk us through what that means.
Sure. We've made a commitment that any woman who is in extreme danger, at risk, at imminent risk of, of harm to herself and to her children, will be given safe shelter in the community. And so that's a commitment that's made right from our leader. And this kind of funding really does help us not turn anybody away, but be able to be there when people reach out to us. We're able to reach right back.
That's right. And no amount is too small. Some suggested values might be $25. That's enough for essentials for babies and toddlers, $100 essentials for teens, and $5,000 really can support a shelter stay for a whole family. So anything that's meaningful to the viewer.
It's, it's really wonderful. We have children coming in, donating toys, donating essentials, donating part of their allowance, up to, you know, experienced philanthropists in the city making some of those larger gifts. It all makes a difference, and we're grateful for every, every donation that comes in.
Thank you so much, Alison.
Thank you. Happy Giving Tuesday.
Happy Giving Tuesday. Now, of course, to make those cash donations online, you can visit our website. Or if you have new unwrapped toys or essential items that you'd like to donate, you can drop that off at any of our nearly 30 drop-off locations across Calgary. That includes presenting sponsored Trail Appliances, Action Furnace, Lux Windows and Doors, Sentinel Storage, AMJ, as well as Country Hills and South Point Toyota. For a full list of those drop-off locations, or again, to donate online, you can visit ctvcalgary.ca.
Good morning. Just looking at our SkyWatch weather camera, brought to you by Action Furnace. Fixed rate or it's free. And this is a live shot from our camera in downtown Calgary. We're seeing some cloud cover over top of Calgary, but our visibility is still good. We have unlimited visibility at the airport, unlimited visibility in Medicine Hat, unlimited visibility in Lethbridge. I wanted to take a look at some of our area highways because we are seeing that there is some snow on our radar, but that doesn't necessarily mean all of it is making it to the surface. Sometimes when you see it on radar, it does, it is indicative of what's in the atmosphere, but not all of it will land on the surface if you do have a drier profile. And so this is how things are shaping up. On the QE2 in the top left, we definitely have snow along Highway 3 near Coutney Pass. That's not unusual. And then Highway 2 south near Oketoks or east near Brooks, looking at that, the snowy shoulders. And right now, the conditions seem to be okay. We have plus one in Brooks and looking at minus one in Lethbridge, one here in Calgary, minus six in Banff. Here's the precipitation that we're seeing on our radar, with a lot of it transitioning from a mix in central Alberta to a snowfall, as we see it track a little further to the south into those areas that are slightly cooler. And then that heavier snow in the southeast corner of our province is starting to become a little bit less intense with regards to those accumulations right now. Our next 24 hours, we are expecting some scattered flurries in Calgary. Again, not a lot. We will see some communities with more than others as this turns into more of a narrow band of precipitation cutting through the city. And then after that, temperatures will remain just slightly above seasonal before we get into Thursday and Friday. And Friday is when we'll see our next chance of some of that precipitation here. We have two degrees today, plus one for tomorrow, four on Thursday, and then minus six on Friday. Overnight value sitting above seasonal as well for the next few days. Our average range is zero for that high, and then minus 12 for the low. Your Morning View brought to you by Lux Windows and Doors. Craft and quality windows and doors for your style, budget, and Alberta's climate. This photo sent in from Wayne near Airdrie at sunset. If you have a photo you would like to share, you can text it to us at 10400.
All right. What's the worst thing you've left in the laundry?
Oh, gosh. Like, as in for too long or for other people to find?
As in, like, you've left it in your pockets?
Oh, lip balm, always. Always happens.
Not as bad as this.
I think I just cooked an entire bag of pasta in my washing machine. I forgot that we stored the bag of pasta that we just bought from Italy in our dirty clothes bag to keep it safe.
Oh, no.
So it's cooked, and at some point we'll see the shot of, like, the back of the machine. So not only is it in all these clothes,
Oh, my gosh.
but it is caked
Oh, no.
on the back of this machine. I learned a new one that you shouldn't do.
Oh?
You know how sometimes in hockey with the jerseys, if you have rotating assistants, you do the As with the hockey tape? If you wash the jerseys with the hockey tape As on there, they get glued right on there.
Oh, no.
And you can take the tape off.
But the A stays. So you're all an A.
Everybody's
You're all an assistant.
You're an A, and you're an A.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
Oh, this is...
Yeah, all that nice pasta from Italy cooked up. All right. If you have videos you'd like to submit for sidebar, email them to yourmorningcalgary@ctv.ca. It's Tuesday, December 2nd.
Could set us up for, for a tax increase into the future.
The projected tax increase is dropping as budget deliberations continue at City Hall. Mason will explain in a moment.
A lot of those issues don't exist there because it is right on the ocean.
The pipeline debate between Premier Smith and B.C. Premier E.B. continues. The latest coming up. And the 2026 World Cup schedule set to drop this weekend. We got a pretty nice start today. We got a little bit of snow moving in.
We do, yes. We probably really missed it.
What do you mean?
We didn't miss it. No, we didn't miss it, did we? No. Okay. Well, never mind. We're getting it anyway. So we are looking at some scattered flurries for today, and not anything like what we had at the end of last week. Temperatures will drop down. We'll see a stronger north wind. Zero is our current value, and we're expecting two. We'll hit that once again. And then tomorrow, we'll see temperatures that are a little bit warmer. I'll have more details in just a few minutes.
Thanks, Jody. Let's have a look at traffic. Still some good travel speeds out there on most roads. There is a stalled vehicle on southbound McLeod Trail approaching 194th in the southwest. That is blocking the right shoulder. There's another stalled vehicle in the northeast on 16th Avenue. That one is blocking the southbound exit ramp onto Barlow. And here's a live look. There's a stalled vehicle that's blocking the right shoulder. This is the southbound exit ramp of Deerfoot onto Memorial Drive. You can see things stacking up there. Late potential residential tax hike is coming down as city council works through next year's budget. Mason DePatty joins us from City Hall. Mason, how much has it dropped?
Well, Jefferson, councillors worked well into the night last night to try and trim the budget and get that tax hike down. So far, they have managed to cut it significantly and say they could go even further.
We're focusing on prudence, and more importantly, we're not risking the future going concern of the city of Calgary.
Council began the week with a forecasted 5.8% property tax increase. Yanomis' vote to cancel the planned tax shift from businesses to homes brought that down to 3.6%. Council then approved redirecting $50 million in investment income from reserves to the operating budget, lowering the projected hike to just 1.6%. Some worry that pulling this money away from reserves could set the city up for a bigger jump in future years, though.
If that were not to materialize into the future, if we allocate too much of our positive variance towards the base budget, it could set us up for, for a tax increase into the future.
So Jefferson, overall, that property tax hike is sitting at about 1.2% right now, but there's still a long ways to go with more than 30 amendments still yet to be debated.
Okay. Thanks, Mason. Calgary police investigating a shooting in the southwest last night. Officers say just before 9:00 p.m., a single shot was fired into a home on 27th Avenue. The resident was at home at the time and was not injured. CPS says the shooting does not appear to be random. Anyone with information is asked to contact police or Crime Stoppers. Lay semi flipping on southbound Stony Trail near Glenmore Trail. It happened just after 8 o'clock last night. Emergency crews took one adult to the Foothills Hospital in serious but non-life-threatening condition. There is no word yet on what led to the collision. A cat died in a fire in Panorama Hills while two other cats were rescued. No people were hurt in the fire. Crews arrived to heavy smoke and flames at around 2 yesterday afternoon on Panamount Heights Northwest. Investigators are still determining a cause, but say it appears the fire started on the outside of the homes. Anyone with information, photos or videos are asked to email piofire@calgary.ca. New commission that will oversee complaints made against police officers is now fully operational, and already there are questions about who makes up the commission and how it will work. Gates Guerin reports.
The province calls it a new era in police oversight.
By creating this independent civilian-led body, we're setting a new standard, one that puts fairness and integrity at the heart of the law enforcement in Alberta.
Complaints against police filed by Albertans will now be received and investigated by the new Police Review Commission. These complaints can range from noncriminal misconduct to cases involving serious injury or death.
With this new model, Albertans can be confident investigations will be handled fairly and impartially.
Investigations were previously handled by individual police agencies, which, according to one retired police inspector, caused a rift in public perception.
And I think that's the goal, is to try to expand on or have at least significantly more police legitimacy and the police not investigating the police.
Dan Jones says calls for more civilian oversight and transparency have been made for quite some time, and a civilian-led commission should help that. But he has questions about who will be a part of it.
Who are they? Are they former police officers that served in the agencies in which they are investigating? And then is that actually changing anything? And I think that's where the public will be like, well, you're not actually changing. And I think that's where the public will be like, well, you're not actually changing it. You're just changing the name of it.
The commission emphasizes independence, but believes experience is crucial.
You can rely upon their investigative expertise, but at that same time, make sure that we're truly not having police ultimately investigating police and making the final conclusions.
The commission is mandated to finish investigations within 180 days. Complaints can now be filed on the commission's website. Gates Guerin, CTV News, Edmonton.
Well, pressure appears to be mounting for the premier to move a separatist agenda forward, with some suggesting it's dividing her party. Hannah Lapina is in this morning. Hannah, what's the latest?
Well, Jefferson, some say this division is on such a fundamental question that it risks splitting the party back into a version of what it was before the Wildrose and Progressive Conservatives merged under Jason Kenny. The issue of whether Alberta should remain in Canada dominated the UCP Convention this past weekend. The premier says she supports remaining inside Canada while asserting Alberta sovereignty.
I've always said my job is to tell people that Canada works and show them that it works, and to get more people to understand that we can have our own sovereign areas of jurisdiction within a united Canada. So I've got a little more work to do.
She keeps using the phrase "sovereign Alberta" in the United Canada because that seems to appeal to both sides. But at a certain point, she's going to have to pick a side.
The debate further intensified Monday after elections. Alberta confirmed the Forever Canadian petition has been certified. Former Deputy Premier Thomas Lukasik collected more than 450,000 signatures. The petition proposal will now go to the Legislative Assembly in the coming weeks, where a committee will make recommendations on what to do next. Options include treating it as a policy proposal or a referendum. And Premier Daniel Smith is also facing recall petitions approved against 14 UCP MLAs. She says there will be some changes to election legislation on Thursday, and many of the people who started these recall petitions point to the UCP's use of the notwithstanding clause. Jefferson, all 14 are still in the signature gathering stage.
OK, thanks, Hannah. Prime Minister Carney doing a small shuffle to his cabinet yesterday after Steven Givaud resigned over a disagreement in climate policy, and Carney is bringing back a familiar face from the Trudeau era. Here's Judy Trin.
The prime minister has decided to divide Steven Givaud's previous responsibilities between three ministers. The biggest surprise was the return of a new old face. Mark Miller is returning to the inner circle after being dropped from cabinet after Mark Carney's election. Miller was a loyal supporter of Justin Trudeau, but has now been appointed Minister of Canadian Culture and Identity, as well as the Minister responsible for official languages.
It feels great. I am a guy that likes to be busy. And so, you know, I was a little restless, but it's nice to get the opportunity to keep on doing some amazing work and contributing to Canada like for the reasons that I got into politics, because I love my country.
Current Minister for Transformation of the Public Service and Procurement, Joelle Lightbound, takes on the additional role of Quebec Lieutenant. Here's what he said after he was sworn in.
I'll just say that I'm honored by the trust bestowed on me by the prime minister. It's an important role in federal politics and in Quebec politics, and I look forward to getting to it.
Also, the current Minister of the Environment and Climate Change, Julie DeBruson, takes on the additional role of Minister for Nature. She takes on responsibility for national parks. All three ministers involved in this shuffle were first elected in 2015. Judy Trin, CTV News, Ottawa.
Well, if you were lucky, you may have spotted a fireball lighting up the sky Sunday. Tyler Barrow takes a look.
This video was captured just east of Drumheller. At the same time, it captivated people's attention at the Calgary Zoo.
I don't know, a fireball.
For those who were lucky enough to look up at just the right time, the memory is unforgettable. Joseph Madamitzia captured this video shortly after 5:30 at the Spruce Meadows Christmas Market.
It was really cool. A lot of people in the crowd in the Christmas market were looking up, and they were really interested.
Otaher Morali saw it from his home. One of his security cameras also caught it.
Magnificent. It was beautiful, actually.
The Facebook group Alberta Aurora Chasers says the fireball was actually visible from across the province, with reports coming in from Wainwright, Edmonton, La Combe, Red Deer, Airdrie, Oketoks, Lethbridge, and Pincher Creek. A University of Calgary Aurora camera caught it in Lucky Lake, Saskatchewan, approximately 145 kilometers south of Saskatoon. But what was it? According to a U of C astronomy professor, he believes it's a piece of space equipment that was scheduled to re-enter the atmosphere around December 1st. This would be from a rocket that launched on November 5th in New Zealand.
With the commercialization of space, we see more strange features in the sky related to launches, and of course, to basically materials that come down.
It was kind of a very, very cool way to cap, you know, the beginning of the Christmas season.
Very few surprises in life, and I think it was just kind of a nice, something different to kind of capture people's attentions away from day-to-day life or politics or whatever it is.
Tyler Barrow, CTV News, Calgary.
Good morning. Just taking a look at the Rockies and some cloud cover with our view from on top of South Point Toyota, Calgary's number-one volume Toyota dealer. And we see that gray sky, but today will be a decent day temperature-wise as we take a look at our starting values, including plus one in Wolf Willow. Your rare chance to live on the Bow is here. Visit live@wolfwillow.ca. And minus one in Strathmore, minus five in Brad Creek. Some light and scattered precipitation throughout our province, including in the central regions where we have some snow. Bit of mixed precip, and then looking at that snowfall into the southern portion of the province as well. But most of it finishing up over the past couple of hours. And again, we have a fairly dry atmospheric profile, so not all of what you're seeing on your radar is making it to the surface. Our wind for today will be predominantly out of the north as we see this weather pattern changing, and we're opening things up to some cooler air for northern Alberta into southern Alberta. We're going to hold on to those temperatures that are at or just slightly above seasonal for the next few days, and then dropping down. We have more of that snow heading into the higher elevations, especially through BC and the Rocky Mountains. Not as much here in Calgary. So when we do get some snow over the next 24 hours, we're not looking at a significant accumulation, maybe a centimeter or two, and then more likely on Friday. 2 degrees is our forecast high for today compared to zero for the average, plus one for tomorrow, 4 degrees on Thursday, and then on Friday, minus 6, with an overnight value of minus 13. And that's the first time that we're expecting overnight temperatures to sit where they normally do. Our low is going to be right around seasonal, and our high will be slightly below on Friday.
Here are the five things you need to know for today.
When I look at Port-au-Prince Rupert, a lot of those issues don't exist there because it is right on the ocean.
The conversation about a new pipeline to the West Coast continues. Premier Smith suggesting the expansion of the Prince Rupert Port makes sense. Smith's comments come after BC Premier David Eby said he would be open to a potential pipeline from Alberta to the BC coast, but only if the tanker ban remains in place. The federal government also reiterating that it won't override the rights of indigenous groups. The coastal First Nations have already opposed the project going through their land. And First Nations chiefs will hear from Prime Minister Carney today. The PM will be speaking at an Assembly of First Nations meeting in Ottawa. He is expected to face questions about the pipeline deal with Alberta. Other senior cabinet members are also expected to address First Nations chiefs during their three-day gathering this week.
I had the opportunity to be a minister for about six years, and now another opportunity. So it feels great. I am a guy that likes to be busy.
Mark Miller has been promoted back to the front bench as part of a cabinet shuffle by Prime Minister Carney. Miller served in cabinet under former Prime Minister Trudeau. He will become the Minister of Canadian Identity and Culture and the Minister responsible for official languages. Former Minister Steven Givaud resigned from cabinet after Ottawa announced its energy deal with our province.
It's very devastating when you live in a community that doesn't have a lot of job opportunities, and you're finding out that your job is going to end.
Algoma Steel will lay off 1,000 workers, more than a third of its workforce. The company is blaming US tariffs. Algoma Steel is based in Sault Ste. Marie. It has been hit hard by the 50% tariffs imposed last summer. A majority of its buyers are in the US. It says the tariffs have forced them to accelerate plans to shut down some operations a year earlier than planned. And FIFA will reveal the match schedule for next summer's World Cup in a live global broadcast on Saturday for the first time at a World Cup draw. The venues and kickoff times for all 104 matches won't be released on the same day we learn the groups. Instead, FIFA is placing the games in the best location based on the time zones. FIFA says the post-draw game allocation process is meant to create optimal conditions for players and fans. On Friday, a draw will determine the World Cup's 12 groups of four. You can watch that on TSN starting at 8:00 AM. Well, new fallout this morning after the Trump administration confirmed it struck an alleged drug boat twice off the coast of Venezuela, while saying the order did not come from Defense Secretary Pete Hegseth. Now bipartisan lawmakers are launching hearings pressing for more information. Here's Alice Barr.
President Trump huddling into the night in the Oval Office with his national security team after the administration confirmed it hit an alleged drug smuggling boat twice back in September off Venezuela. A US official and a source familiar with the Pentagon's actions tell NBC News, "The second strike was ordered after the first failed to kill everyone onboard." The White House saying Admiral Frank Bradley, not Defense Secretary Pete Hegseth, ordered the second hit.
Admiral Bradley worked well within his authority and the law. He directed the engagement to ensure the boat was destroyed, and the threat of narco terrorists to the United States was completely eliminated.
Admiral Bradley is overseeing a ramped-up US military presence in the Caribbean, part of the Trump administration's fight against drug traffickers.
The president has made it quite clear that if narco terrorists, again, are trafficking illegal drugs towards the United States, he has the authority to kill them.
The use of a so-called double tap is raising serious questions among lawmakers in both parties, with some saying that targeting incapacitated survivors after the first hit could be a war crime.
We're looking to this very, very diligently and appropriately because there is the possibility of illegal activity by armed forces.
The Senate Armed Services Republican Chair saying classified oversight hearings could begin as soon as this week.
We're able to see videos and see what the orders were. We'll have a lot more information.
Promising a bipartisan push to get to the facts. In Washington, Alice Barr, NBC News.
Hello, everyone. Glenn Sheeler inside the SportsCenter newsroom with your must-see moment from Monday, and it comes from the Monday nighter between the Giants and the Patriots. You just don't see this every day. New York lining up for a 47-yard field goal, but their kicker, Young Way Koo, jams his foot into the turf on the approach. Hunter Jamie Gillen left holding the ball, gets tackled for a huge loss and a turnover. A bizarre scene as Koo stubs his foot well short of the ball, like a golfer taking a little bit too much dirt. Silver lining for the kicker, he never touched the ball. Doesn't count as a missed kick, but that just sums up the Giants in another forgetful season. The quarterback saying his reaction says it all. That's your must-see moment tonight on TSN. The Raptors trying to snap a two-game losing streak. They're back home taking on the Blazers. Pregame cover starts at 7:00 Eastern. That's all for now from the SportsCenter newsroom. Have a great day. The TSN Must See Moment is brought to you by West Island College. Be bold, be brave, be ready. Own your future.
You are looking at Zach, who's the Director of Science Connections at Telus Spark Science Center, working on a wood burning project. That looks like a dinosaur. Is that what you were aiming for?
Yeah, it's what I was aiming for. I don't know if I fully made it. It's a little bit of an artist's rendition of a dinosaur.
I see it. A shorter neck than a brontosaurus, but a kind of brontosaurus-y-like.
Maybe like a grazing dinosaur, eating grass on the ground, right? But yeah, imagination reigns.
I love that. Now, of course, Telus Spark Science Center is a registered charity, and so it's the support of the community that really allows you guys do what it is that you do here, making science accessible.
Yeah, it's really important for us that science is, of course, for everybody. And as a science center, we want to be welcoming for all. So it's really important for us to offer programs that are able to engage everybody, no matter where they're at with their science enthusiasm or anything like that. It's about just getting that spark of knowledge, that little bit of excitement, because we don't know what's going to inspire the next astronaut, engineer, computer programmer, or what have you.
Now, of course, today is Giving Tuesday, and Telus Spark Science Center is matching donations up to $7,500 for a total of $15,000, and that support goes a long way in the educational programs that you offer.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, the support of our community in helping our programs, it makes an immense difference. So we're able to offer programs like Operation Minerva, where we pair grade eight girls and gender diverse teens with women who work in STEM careers, because we know from the data that is where a lot of girls kind of lose their interest or passion in pursuing sciences. We also have our week-long science school, where teachers take their classes into the science center for a whole week to explore deeper topics. And even being out in the community, working with schools on coding and robotics. So through our Ready Set Robot programs in similar kind of vein, so, yeah.
Really diverse programs, and of course, with the holidays fast approaching, giving the gift of science is such a great way and a gift idea that you can give to your loved ones.
Yeah, absolutely. Our memberships are a great opportunity to come and experience this place. We're constantly doing different things and new experiences. Plus, you get discounts on our programs. So giving the gift of science is truly one of the greatest gifts you could receive this year.
And the memberships really pay for themselves after just a few trips.
Yeah, a couple of trips and admission, you've already paid for yourself. And like I said, you get those discounts, and you can come at times or maybe not crazy busy, and you don't have to feel the pressure to stay for like a long time. You can come just in short bursts. Different ways for everybody to kind of engage that way, for sure.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you so much, Zach.
My pleasure.
Of course, if you are interested in taking part in Giving Tuesday, you can always visit Telus Spark Science Center in person and donate, or you can donate online at sparkscience.ca.
Good morning. Looking at our beautiful downtown skyline with our SkyWatch Weather Camera, brought to you by Action Furnace. Fixed rate or it's free, and this live shot is facing east from on top of our building here at CTV Calgary. Our forecast high for today, just slightly above seasonal. The average high is zero, and we're expecting 2 degrees. The record temperature, 14.4. And sunrise occurring in just over 20 minutes, 25 minutes or so as we look at sunset at 4:32. Our road conditions across southern Alberta, seeing that there is a lot of snow in some of those shoulders, but also noticing that as you're looking further north along the QE2 north of Red Deer, we have some melting or some lack of precipitation as compared to the higher elevations like Highway 3, Cootney Pass in the bottom left. That makes sense. We've had a lot of snowfall in those mountains. Zero is our current temperature here in Calgary, and plus one in Medicine Hat, minus one in Edmonton, and minus one in Lethbridge, minus 10 in Fort McMurray. Some precipitation there as we've had this system with this colder air meeting up with that moisture-laden system. And then into southern Alberta for today, we'll have some scattered flurries, some mixed precip at times, and then looking at this rain transitioning to snow throughout central Alberta. Over the next 24 hours, we'll see maybe one to two centimeters, so not a large accumulation here, but our daytime high, as you saw, up to 2 degrees. And then we've already technically hit that, but we'll do it again. And then plus one for Medicine Hat, plus one for Lethbridge. Our temp will continue to remain slightly above seasonal for the next few days, dropping down on Friday and Saturday, and then back up to that 0 to 3 degree range for a good portion of next week. And condition-wise, more sunshine. So we'll see a bit more of that slushy condition for your parking lot snow or some of that snow that you have in the back alleys or walkways as you're taking out the garbage. Stay with us. Coming up after the break, we have your top news headlines at 8 o'clock.
It's Tuesday, December 2nd.
Could set us up for a tax increase into the future.
The projected tax increase is dropping as budget deliberations continue at City Hall. Mason will explain in a moment.
A lot of those issues don't exist there because it is right on the ocean.
The pipeline debate between Premier Smith and BC Premier Eby continues. The latest coming up. And the 2026 World Cup schedule set to drop this weekend. Welcome to Your Morning Calgary. We've got a little bit of snow moving in this morning.
We do. We're expecting some scattered flurries today here in the Calgary area and portions of central and southern Alberta. But warm temperatures, 2 degrees currently at Wolf Willow, our school day forecast, brought to by the Alberta Teachers Association. We'll have northwest winds of around 10 to 20 kilometers per hour for the morning. By the afternoon, expecting that to be more persistent, a sustained wind of 20 to 40, and then temperatures dropping down as we make room for some of that snow. I'll have more details on your forecast coming up.
Thanks, Jody. Let's have a look at traffic there. Let's have a look at traffic there. A couple stalled vehicles to watch out for. The first is on southbound Stony. This is the exit ramp onto Glenmore Trail in the southeast. There's another on southbound McLeod approaching 194th in the southwest. That is blocking the right shoulder. And here is a live look at Deerfoot and 130th Avenue southeast where traffic, you can see slowing down there. But with dozens of amendments on the table, the projected residential tax increase is coming down. Mason DePati joins us from City Hall. Mason, how much has council managed to drop that tax increase?
Well, Jefferson, they've cut it pretty significantly with it sitting around 1.2% right now. They say they could take it even further. They started the week with it sitting at 5.8%. A unanimous vote that cancel a planned tax shift from businesses to homes then brought that down to 3.6%. Council also approved redirecting $50 million in investment income from reserves into the operating budget. That move pulls next year's projected tax hike down to even further to 1.6%.
So the idea of earmarking the first $50 million in investment income to specific priorities around policing, around transit, around preventing group causes of crime, this is the prudent thing and the needed thing to do right now. We could go all the way to 0%, but what it means is not funding the needed safety improvements that Calgarians have told us are important right now.
Some on council do worry using the investment income could create pressure in future budgets. Regardless, there's still a long way to go with more than 30 amendments left to debate, including a $9 million transit security pilot and $3 million to plan a YMCA and library in the West Village. So for now, Jefferson, that projected increase is down to 1.2%. But again, there's still a long way to go, so that could still change.
Okay, thanks, Mason. A Calgary man has been found guilty of taking part in terrorist activities overseas. A judge ruling that Jamal Borhat traveled to Syria to fight with the Islamic State. Here's Terry Fikowski.
Jamal Borhat traveled to Syria to fight with ISIS for 11 months between 2013 and 2014, and on Monday, more than a decade later, was found guilty on three counts of participating in terrorist activities. The conviction comes five years after the now 35-year-old was charged after a lengthy and complicated international investigation.
Been a long process, a lot of work done by everybody. So just having a conclusion or most of a conclusion is definitely a good spot to be.
Justice Karina Dario says evidence shows Borhat took part in training, acts of violence, and leadership duties with a shared goal of creating an Islamic state. He was prepared to kill and die for his beliefs, she said in her decision. He used firearms with the intention to kill anyone who was non-Muslim. In 2022, his co-accused and cousin, Hussein Borhat, pled guilty in a separate trial and was sentenced to 12 years in prison.
The barbarity of the acts they've engaged in is incredibly troubling.
For this criminologist, the cases reflect Canada's struggles to address foreign fighter recruitment and radicalization. According to the RCMP, the number of terrorism-related charges in Canada jumped 488% in 2024.
Unfortunately, when you neglect border security, when you neglect national security, when you under-resource your federal law enforcement and security services, this is what happens.
Court heard Borhat returned to Canada after being imprisoned in Syria for stealing medication. He's been out on bail for the past five years, but on Monday was taken into custody.
To say that the family and Mr. Borhat are anything but devastated by this ruling would be an understatement.
Three counts of participating in a terrorist activity each carry a maximum sentence of 10 years in prison and can be served consecutively. The Crown and defense will return to court for sentencing arguments on January 16th. Terry Fikowski, CTV News, Calgary.
Calgary Police investigating a shooting in the southwest last night. Officers say just before 9:00 PM, a single shot was fired into a home on 27th Avenue. The resident was at home at the time but was not injured. CPS say the shooting does not appear to be random. Anyone with information is asked to contact police or Crime Stoppers. And we're expecting to learn more today about the Alberta government's plan to fight Ottawa's gun buyback program. Over the weekend, Danielle Smith said her government will introduce a motion to defy the initiative. It bans hundreds of assault-style firearms. It includes a voluntary buyback program if passed. Smith says the Alberta government will instruct all provincial entities, including police agencies, to refuse to enforce or prosecute under the federal gun seizure program. The province, rather, is expected to outline its plan this afternoon. And pressure appears to be mounting for the premier to move a separatist agenda forward with some suggesting it's dividing her party. Hannah Lapina is in this morning. Hannah, what's the latest?
Well, Jefferson, some say this division is on such a fundamental question that it risks splitting the party back into a version of what it was before the Wildrose and progressive conservatives merged under Jason Kenny. The issue of whether Alberta should remain in Canada dominated the UCP convention. The premier says she supports remaining inside Canada, but while asserting Alberta sovereignty.
I've always said my job is to tell people that Canada works and show them that it works and to get more people to understand that we can have our own sovereign areas of jurisdiction within a united Canada. So I've got a little more work to do.
I would say that probably more than half of our membership actively support the idea of an independent Alberta.
The debate further intensified on Monday after elections. Alberta confirmed the Forever Canadian petition has been certified. Former Deputy Premier Thomas Lukasick collected more than 450,000 signatures. The petition proposal will now go to the Legislative Assembly in the coming weeks, where a committee will make recommendations on what to do next. Options include treating it as a policy proposal or a referendum. Premier Danielle Smith is also facing recall petitions approved against 14 UCP MLAs. She says there will be some changes to election legislation on Thursday, and many of the people who started these recall petitions point to the UCP's use of the notwithstanding clause. Jefferson, all 14 are still in the signature gathering stage.
Okay, thanks, Hannah. Alberta Health Services warning about measles exposure at the Calgary Airport. A person onboard a KLM flight on November 27th was flying while infectious. That flight arrived in Calgary at 1:30 that afternoon. Exposure locations include international arrivals, customs, and baggage claim. The infectious person also went to the Clare's Home Hospital on November 24th. Anyone who develops symptoms should call the measles hotline before going to any healthcare facility. A 15-year-old Calgary student is one of 30 semifinalists in the Breakthrough Junior Challenge competition based on advanced scientific concepts and theories. The students created original videos, and a Dofia's film focused on organoids or lab-created versions of human organs. The winner will receive $400,000 worth of prizes, including a college scholarship and a new science lab for their school. You can visit breakthroughjuniorchallenge.org to learn more. Finalists will be announced on December 10th. All right, let's check in with Jody in the weather.
Reminds me of the kind of stuff you and I were doing as teenagers.
Right.
We're both overachieving.
All the time, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, still are, really, aren't we? Mine is good for her. That's incredible. Minus six in Brad Creek, we have minus one in Airdrie, plus one in Wolf Willow. Calgary's tallest slide is coming in 2026. Visit Wolf Willow to experience it. Bit of precipitation across southern Alberta and central Alberta this morning and overnight. We see some mixed precip transitioning to light flurry activity. And then today, we'll see more of that throughout the Calgary area and into the southeast corner of our province. This is where we're at in terms of that snow on the ground. As you know, we had snow events both at the beginning and the end of last week for the work week, and we're still seeing the residual effects from that. And a little more snow likely to be added to it over the next 24 hours for Calgary. We'll see it more in bands of snow, so some scattered flurries at times, heavy depending on where you are, whereas other communities might not even experience that snowfall. And then we'll see this clear out, making room for temperatures that will sit around or slightly above freezing for the next couple of days before we head into Friday with more precipitation likely into our region. This time, we'll have a little more precipitation. 2 degrees today, plus one for tomorrow, and then four on Thursday, dropping to minus six on Friday with that next chance of precip. And again, just for context, our average high is zero and our average low is closer to minus 12. So we're above our seasonal values for the next few days before we're not in terms of those lows on Friday. Your cheapest gas brought to you by Country Hills Toyota, home of free winter tires and free maintenance, your Toyota Giant. And your cheapest gas prices found on gasbuddy.com include 103.9 at the Esso Station on 17th Ave in the southwest. Stay with us coming up after the break. Giving Tuesday is one of the most important fundraising days of the year for animals who are relying on Calgary Humane Society. We'll get details on how you can help and how you can double your impact. That's us.
Here are the five things you need to know for today.
When I look at Port-au-Prince Rupert, a lot of those issues don't exist there because it is right on the ocean.
The conversation about a new pipeline to the West Coast continues. Premier Smith suggesting the expansion of the Prince Rupert Port makes sense. Smith's comments come after B.C. Premier David Eby said he would be open to a potential pipeline from Alberta to the B.C. coast, but only if the tanker ban remains in place. The federal government also reiterating that it won't override the rights of indigenous groups. The coastal First Nations have already opposed the project going through their land. And First Nations chiefs will hear from Prime Minister Carney today. The EPM will be speaking at an assembly of First Nations meeting in Ottawa. He is expected to face questions about the pipeline deal with Alberta. Other senior cabinet members are also expected to address First Nations chiefs during their three-day gathering this week.
Had the opportunity to be a minister for about six years and now another opportunity. So it feels great. I am a guy that likes to be busy.
Mark Miller has been promoted back to the front bench as part of a cabinet shuffle by Prime Minister Carney. Miller served in cabinet under former Prime Minister Trudeau. He will become the Minister of Canadian Identity and Culture and the Minister responsible for official languages. Former Minister Steven Juve resigned from cabinet after Ottawa announced its energy deal with our province.
It's very devastating when you live in a community that doesn't have a lot of job opportunities and you're finding out that your job is going to end.
Algoa Steel will lay off 1,000 workers, more than a third of its workforce. The company is blaming U.S. tariffs. Algoa Steel is based in Sault Ste. Marie. It has been hit hard by the 50% tariffs imposed last summer. A majority of its buyers are in the U.S. It says the tariffs have forced them to accelerate plans to shut down some operations a year earlier than planned. And FIFA will reveal the match schedule for next summer's World Cup in a live global broadcast on Saturday. For the first time at a World Cup draw, the venues and kickoff times for all 104 matches won't be released on the same day we learn the groups. Instead, FIFA is placing the games in the best location based on the time zones. FIFA says the post-draw game allocation process is meant to create optimal conditions for players and fans. On Friday, a draw will determine the World Cup's 12 groups of four. You can watch that on TSN starting at 8:00 AM.
Well, as you know, today is Giving Tuesday, one of the largest fundraising days of the year, and the Calgary Humane Society is hoping that you might consider them as your charity of choice this year. Carrie Fritz is the executive director of the Calgary Humane Society and joins us this morning. Good morning. Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you for having me, Jody. It's always nice to be here.
Your organization does so much in our community. It's so impactful. But for folks who are maybe not aware of how much the Calgary Humane Society does, would you mind sharing a bit of the background?
Sure, of course. We are Calgary's foremost animal shelter. We're over 100 years old, supporting the Calgary community. Every year, we take in about 4,000 animals. This year, we've been really heavily focused on our continued companionship programming. It's new programming that keeps an animal in its home, but we still have 4,100 animals that come into the shelter every single year that truly need our intervention and our care and help them on their journey to find their new forever family.
Yes, it's incredible, the amount of effort and work and the hours and time. You do have some heartbreaking stories. I wanted to touch on one about a pup named Oreo.
Of course, yeah, Oreo is one of the animals that did have to come into the shelter. And this is a story about a woman who purchased Oreo from a pet retailer in Calgary. And then just due to a change in circumstance, something happened in her life that prevented her from giving the care that Oreo needed to him. And so she made that heart-wrenching and selfless decision to bring that animal in and trusted us to help him find his new family. So he came in, he got all the vet care that he needed, he got some behavioral support, and then very quickly, he was adopted by a loving family. And it was very important to her that he went to a family with kids. And so I'm happy to say that he did get adopted by a family with kids and living the best life.
And there are so many stories like that of animals that are really in desperate need. Tell us about the impact that one can make on Giving Tuesday especially.
Yeah, Giving Tuesday is a pretty important day for Calgary Humane Society. It's a day that encourages everybody to do good and give in whatever way that they can. And we are 100% supported by the Calgary community. We don't get any government funding for the work that we do, so we really do rely on Calgarians for support. And we celebrate today that generosity because we are so incredibly supported by Calgarians and we're grateful.
Absolutely. And we're seeing some of, just some of the pups and cats and critters that you have that go through there. The impact that somebody can make with a donation, tell us where that money goes and what would happen if someone were to donate today.
Yeah, so for Giving Tuesday, we are raising money for the animals that do have to come into the shelter, so it's 4,100 animals. So our goal is 350,000 for Giving Tuesday and then all through the month of December. And really, that is going to everything that we need to make sure that these animals are well cared for. So their food, their bedding, their medical supplies. We have a fully functioning vet clinic at Calgary Humane Society. We do thousands of surgeries every single year. So all the donations from Giving Tuesday and through the month of December will go towards that care that they need to thrive and move on to the next stage of their life.
And if somebody is in a position where maybe they can't make a financial donation today, what else can they do to help?
Oh, my goodness, please, whatever you can do and whatever way you can give, we welcome that. So we have hundreds of volunteers that come in every single day. We have foster families who take our animals into their home when they need a longer length of stay. So if anyone has that time or that space, please give us a call or go on our website and look at those opportunities, and we would welcome that very much.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much and best of luck for today.
Thank you so much.
And we certainly appreciate the work that you're doing in our community. To learn more about how you can make a difference through Giving Tuesday donations to the Calgary Humane Society, head to calgary humane.ca, and that website is on your screen.
And I just want to say thank you so much, Jody. And I do want to mention they're matching sponsors as well. So Homes Alive Pets and Royal Canin, they are matching. So everyone has the confidence that their impact is going to be doubled, double the work that we can do for those animals.
That's incredible, incredible. I'm glad we got that in. Thank you so much.
Well, good morning. We're seeing a bit of that snow on the shoulders and a shaky camera from that wind. This is our SkyWatch weather camera brought to you by Action Furnace, fixed rate or it's free. This live shot is facing west with our camera just off of Deerfoot Trail. We have unlimited visibility right now here in our city, compromised visibility north and unlimited visibility in the south. This is what it looks like with regards to our road conditions and that visibility. Bit of ice showing up on the camera on the QE2 north of Red Deer and some snowier routes as you're heading into those higher elevations. For example, in Highway 3 at Cootney Pass in the bottom left-hand side of your screen, near Brooks or near Oaktoaks, we have great driving conditions, more precipitation on the way today in a good portion of the province, but not a lot of precipitation. 2 degrees in Medicine Hat, 2 degrees at the airport here in Calgary. And this is what we're talking about, that combination of some moisture meeting up with that cooler air. And so in the areas where it's still a bit warmer, we have that showing up as mixed precip or rain, and then snowfall in the northern areas and into portions of southern Alberta as well. Today's forecast high, we've already peaked. We're at 2 degrees for a forecast high for today. We already reached it earlier, and then we're back to that 2-degree temperature now. We'll end up closer to around the freezing mark by the afternoon as we see that colder air start to dominate and push some of that warmer air out of southern Alberta. Minus one for high in Fernie today. We're looking at minus two in Edmonton, 2 degrees here, and then we have 2 degrees in Medicine Hat, plus one in Lethbridge. Our overnight value is right around minus seven to minus two, as warm as minus two over the next few nights. And then we drop down in overnight temps and in daytime highs on Friday and again on Saturday. Your Morning View brought to you by Lux Windows and Doors, crafting quality windows and doors for your style, budget, and Alberta's climate. This photo of the sunrise from Cheadle, Alberta, sent to us from our friend RJ DeRosa. If you have a photo you would like to share, you can text it to us at 10-400.
All right, what's the worst thing you've left in the laundry?
Oh, gosh. Like as in for too long or for other people to find?
As in like you've left it in your pockets and you've washed it by accident.
Lip balm, always. It always happens.
Not as bad as this.
I think I just cooked an entire bag of pasta in my washing machine. I forgot that we stored the bag of pasta that we just bought from Italy in our dirty clothes bag to keep it safe.
Oh, no.
So it's cooked and at some point we'll see the shot of like the back of the machine. So not only is it in all these clothes.
Oh, my gosh.
But it is caked.
Oh, no.
On the back of this machine. I learned a new one that you shouldn't do.
Oh?
You know how sometimes in hockey with the jerseys, if you have rotating assistants, you do the As with the hockey tape? If you wash the jerseys with the hockey tape As on there, they get glued right on there.
Oh, no.
And you can take the tape off.
But the As...
But the A stays, so you're all an A.
Everybody's an A.
You're all an assistant.
You're an A and you're an A.
Oh my gosh.
Yes.
Oh, this is...
Yeah, all that nice pasta from Italy cooked up. All right, if you have videos you'd like to submit for sidebar, email them to your Morning Calgary at ctv.ca.
Could set us up for a tax increase into the future.
The projected tax increase is dropping as budget deliberations continue at City Hall. Mason will explain in a moment.
A lot of those issues don't exist there because it is right on the ocean.
The pipeline debate between Premier Smith and B C Premier Eby continues. The latest coming up. And the 2026 World Cup schedule set to drop this weekend.
Welcome to Your Morning Calgary. Pretty nice morning, but we got a little bit of snow moving in.
We do. We're expecting some scattered flurries today, a high of two degrees. Technically, we've already reached it, but we will hover around that two degree mark to about minus one for the afternoon with some light flurries showing up at the airport. Our wind out of the north at 24 kilometers per hour. And that's where you'll feel like it's a lot colder with that wind chill value, so feeling a few degrees cooler for most of the day today.
Thanks, Jody. Let's have a look at traffic, a few stalled vehicles to watch out for on your commute. There is one on eastbound 16th Avenue approaching Barlow. There's another stalled vehicle on southbound McLeod Trail approaching 194th Avenue. And here's a live look at a stalled vehicle blocking the left lane. This is southbound Barlow approaching Deerfoot Trail southeast.
A potential residential tax hike is coming down as city council works through next year's budget. Mason DePatty joins us from City Hall. Mason, how much has it dropped?
Well, Jefferson, after another long day of trying to turn the budget and bring that property tax hike down, councillors have brought it to about 1.2%. But they say it could go even further.
We're focusing on prudence and more importantly, we're not risking the future going concern with the city public.
Council began the week with a forecasted 5.8% property tax increase. Unanimous vote to cancel the planned tax shift from businesses to homes then brought that down to 3.6%. Council also approved redirecting $50 million in investment income from reserves into the operating budget, lowering the projected hike to just 1.6%. But some worry that pulling money away from reserves could set the city up for a bigger jump in future years.
If that were not to materialize into the future, if we allocate too much of our positive variance towards the base budget, it could set us up for a tax increase into the future.
So Jefferson, again, the property tax hike is sitting at around 1.2%, but there's still a long way to go with more than 30 amendments still to be debated.
Okay, thanks, Mason. Calgary Police are investigating a shooting in the southwest last night. Officers say just before 9:00 P M, a single shot was fired into a home on 27th Avenue. The resident was at home at the time but was not injured. CPS say the shooting does not appear to be random. Anyone with information is asked to contact police or Crime Stoppers. A semi flipping on southbound Stony Trail near Glenmore. This happened just after eight o'clock last night. Emergency crews took one adult to the Foothills Hospital in serious but non-life threatening condition. There is no word yet on what led to the collision. And the province is changing the way complaints are handled against police officers in Alberta. A new Police Review Commission is now in charge.
For far too long, the perception of the public was that police were investigating police. And because of that, there was a level of distress. It's now time for change.
The Police Review Commission is an independent arms-length civilian body. It will handle complaints in three main categories, death or serious injury, allegations of criminal offenses, and non-criminal misconduct complaints. As part of its mandate, the P R C must complete investigations within 180 days. If an extension is required, the reasons why will be made public. Ella says the new commission will provide transparency, improve accountability, and strengthen public trust in policing. Alberta's current police watchdog Acer will now operate under the P R C. Well, pressure appears to be mounting for the premier to move a separatist agenda forward with some suggesting it's dividing her party. Hannah Lapine is in this morning. Hannah, what's the latest?
Well, Jefferson, some say this division is on such a fundamental question that it risks splitting the party back into a version of what it was before the Wildrose and progressive conservatives merged under Jason Kenny. The issue of whether Alberta should remain in Canada dominated the U C P convention. The premier says she supports remaining inside Canada while asserting Alberta sovereignty.
I've always said my job is to tell people that Canada works and show them that it works and to get more people to understand that we can have our own sovereign areas of jurisdiction within a united Canada. So I've got a little more work to do.
She keeps using the phrase sovereign Alberta and a united Canada because that seems to appeal to both sides. But at a certain point, she's going to have to pick a side.
The debate further intensified on Monday after elections. Alberta confirmed the Forever Canadian petition has been certified. Former Deputy Premier Thomas Lukasik collected more than 450,000 signatures. The petition proposal will go to the Legislative Assembly in the coming weeks, where a committee will make recommendations on what to do next. Options include treating it as a policy proposal or a referendum. And Premier Daniel Smith is also facing recall petitions approved against 14 U C P M L As. She says there will be some changes to election legislation on Thursday. Many of the people who started the recall petitions point to the U C P's use of the notwithstanding clause. Jefferson, all 14 are still in the signature gathering stage.
Okay, thanks, Hannah. Global Fest is temporarily suspending operations. On its website, the organization cites unprecedented financial pressures, global geopolitical constraints, and economic uncertainty. It says dropping attendance numbers also factored into the decision. Global Fest has suspended ticket sales for the next six weeks as it tries to secure financial support. Organizers hope to be fully operational again by mid-January. Well, coming up after the break, we'll talk to a lifestyle expert about ways to give back this holiday season. Stay with us.
Well, the holiday shopping season is in full swing and there are things that people can do to give back as they are shopping. Danielle Reyes-Coca is a lifestyle expert and joins us this morning with some suggestions. Good morning, Danielle. Thank you so much for being with us.
Good morning, Jody. Nice to be here.
This is a great time of year and a great day for people to consider donating to causes that they care about. And one of those categories, of course, is for animals. And you have a great suggestion on how people can help.
Absolutely. If you're looking for the perfect gift for the animal lovers in your life, adopting a species is a meaningful way to celebrate wildlife that you care about deeply and you get to bring home something at the same time. W W F Canada's Wildlife Adoption Kits come with everything that you need to make the experience extra special. A soft, beautiful plush animal, a poster full of fascinating facts about the species and conservation work that it supports, a personalized adoption certificate, and everything comes neatly packaged in a reusable tote. Proceeds support vital conservation efforts and real species and restore their habitats. There are over 45 species that you can choose from and you can check out wwf.ca/shop.
Okay, those are all so adorable. I can't even, it's wild. Now, we know that holiday shopping is in full swing and Rakuten can also help Canadians stretch their dollars further and shop a little more strategically.
Absolutely. Why not shop and get cash back? Giving back to yourself this Giving Tuesday. With over 750 of your favorite stores on Rakuten, it's a no brainer. You're already making purchases from brands that you love like Sephora or Simons. Why wouldn't you want to get cash back at the same time on your online orders? Getting started is as simple as visiting rakuten.ca or the Rakuten app and search for retailer before shopping. For even more effortless experiences, you can add a Rakuten browser extension onto your Chrome Casts and Chrome Explorer, automatically popping up cash back options as are available for you. Never miss an opportunity to get cash back.
Absolutely. You also have suggestions on how to give back while enjoying a nice little treat.
Who doesn't need something sweet sometimes, right?
Yes.
I always, always make an excuse to have something sweet on hand. If you're looking for a gift that's guaranteed to impress, you really can't go wrong with a Canadian-made chocolate from Purdy's Chocolatier. Every piece is expertly crafted and packaged in Vancouver using premium sustainable cocoa so that it tastes as good as it feels to give. Founded in 1907 in British Columbia, Purdy's Chocolatier has become a true Canadian classic. Some great gifting options included their holiday treat baskets, the holiday gift tin with 20 assorted pieces, the assorted classic boxes and the iconic hedgehog chocolates, or seasonal favorites like peppermint bark, which is my personal favorite. There's truly something for every chocolate lover on your list. Check out purdys.com or head to a location near you.
Wonderful suggestion. Danielle, thank you so much for your time today. We certainly appreciate it. Once again, Danielle Reyes-Coca is a lifestyle expert. And for more information and ideas, you can head to Danielle's Instagram.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. We're starting to see that cloud rolling in to Calgary. This is a view from on top of South Point Toyota, Calgary's number one volume Toyota dealer. And the shot is from Deerfoot Trail and Barlow Trail in the southeast. Temperatures include plus one in Wolf Willow. We have minus one in Strathmore, zero in downtown Calgary, one at the airport, some light flurries moving in now. Enjoy winter walks along the Bow River and Fish Creek. Visit Wolf Willow. We have that precipitation, that snow, and a little mixed precip into central Alberta that's now starting to transition to more straightforward snow. And that's what we'll have for today, just scattered flurries throughout the region, not looking at a significant accumulation in Calgary, but enough that you'll notice it. The other part that you will really be paying attention to, I suspect, will be that wind as we have north winds of around 22, 40 kilometers per hour for the day. You'll already notice them on our screen coming in from the northwest down toward the southeast. And this will make it feel a degree or two colder. And of course, when it's a north wind, it really seems to resonate. We have that flurry activity expected throughout most of the afternoon and into the evening, but as I mentioned, not a lot of accumulation here. And then more snow moving into the province on Friday. You can see a lot of that coming from B C through the interior on Friday, and then that will cross over the Rockies into our region. Daytime highs for the next few days will remain above seasonal, two degrees for today and then plus one for tomorrow, four on Thursday, dropping down to minus six for Friday and Saturday, and then back up to zero for Sunday. Monday, expecting a high of around three degrees and two for Tuesday. The average value for high, zero. The average low, minus 12. And we'll reach those minus values that are seasonal by Friday night and then start to recover after that. So a little bit of an unsettled day. If you're sensitive to pressure changes, no doubt you likely already know this, but for the next few days, we're going to see those temperatures just riding slightly above freezing. More sunshine tomorrow, which will help out with some of that melting. So we will see a bit of slush developing and then adding to that snow with another one to two centimeters for today.
Here are the five things you need to know for today.
When I look at Port-au-Prince Rupert, a lot of those issues don't exist there because it is right on the ocean.
The conversation about a new pipeline to the West Coast continues. Premier Smith suggesting the expansion of the Prince Rupert Port makes sense. Missed comments come after B C Premier David Eby said he would be open to a potential pipeline from Alberta to the B C coast, but only if the tanker ban remains in place. The federal government also reiterating that it won't override the rights of indigenous groups. The coastal First Nations have already opposed the project going through their land. And First Nations chiefs will hear from Prime Minister Carney today. The E P M will be speaking at an assembly of First Nations meeting in Ottawa. He is expected to face questions about the pipeline deal with Alberta. Other senior cabinet members are also expected to address First Nations chiefs during their three day gathering this week.
I had the opportunity to be a minister for about six years and now another opportunity. So it feels great. I am a guy that likes to be busy.
Mark Miller has been promoted back to the front bench as part of a cabinet shuffle by Prime Minister Carney. Miller served in cabinet under former Prime Minister Trudeau. He will become the Minister of Canadian Identity and Culture and the Minister responsible for official languages. Former Minister Steven Juve resigned from cabinet after Ottawa announced its energy deal with our province.
It's very devastating when you live in a community that doesn't have a lot of job opportunities and you're finding out that your job is going to end.
Algoa Steel will lay off 1,000 workers, more than a third of its workforce. The company is blaming U S tariffs. Algoa Steel is based in Sault Ste Marie. It has been hit hard by the 50% tariffs imposed last summer. A majority of its buyers are in the U S. It says the tariffs have forced them to accelerate plans to shut down some operations a year earlier than planned. And FIFA will reveal the match schedule for next summer's World Cup in a live global broadcast on Saturday. For the first time at a World Cup draw, the venues and kickoff times for all 104 matches won't be released on the same day we learn the groups. Instead, FIFA is placing the games in the best location based on the time zones. FIFA says the post draw game allocation process is meant to create optimal conditions for players and fans. On Friday, a draw will determine the World Cup's 12 Groups of Four. You can watch that on T S N starting at 8:00 A M.
Hello, everyone. Glenn Sheeler inside the SportsCenter newsroom with your must see moment from Monday, and it comes from the Monday nighter between the Giants and the Patriots. You just don't see this every day. New York lining up for a 47 yard field goal, but their kicker, Young Way Koo, jams his foot into the turf on the approach. Hunter Jamie Gillen left holding the ball, gets tackled for a huge loss and a turnover. A bizarre scene as Koo stubs his foot well short of the ball like a golfer taking a little bit too much dirt. Silver lining for the kicker, he never touched the ball, doesn't count as a missed kick, but that just sums up the Giants in another forgetful season. Yeah, the quarterback saying his reaction says it all. That's your must see moment tonight on T S N. The Raptors trying to snap a two game losing streak. They're back home taking on the Blazers. Pre-game cover starts at 7:00 Eastern. That's all for now from the SportsCenter newsroom.
It's Giving Tuesday today, and I'm at TeleSpark Science Centre. I'm joined by CEO Guy as well as Director of Advancement, Amber. Now, Guy, Spark Science Centre is a registered charity, so donations and community support is always important and today only. You are matching donations.
We are. We're fortunate to have the support of the Pat Scalney Robertson Family Foundation and they're matching gifts up to $7,500. So that'll translate into $15,000 that we'll raise today and we appreciate that support and we appreciate the support from everyone to participate in Giving Tuesday.
And of course, that really supports what you do here, whether it's the exhibits and also educational programs. So Amber, can you tell us more about sort of this impact of what $15,000 means?
Yeah, so as a registered educational charity, a big part of what Spark does isn't just the experience that guests have when they come on a weekend or on a weekday as a family, but we actually have 75,000 students coming through this building every year to receive enhancements to their curriculum and enhancements to their science education. And it's so critical to make sure that every young person gets to see themselves in science, technology, engineering, art, and math.
Yeah, and Spark Science Centre really has won awards in so many different ways, whether it's from the Astronaut Ice Cream Cafe, some of the food that you guys do, some of the experiences that you offer. And these are creating memories too for families.
Massive memories and you know, just like that first kind of spark of science and that first spark of inspiration can put young people on paths to become innovators, which is such a massive part of Calgary's identity. And we just want to make sure that every child, no matter what kind of challenges they face in their life, any kind of barriers that they're experiencing, has the opportunity to have experiences like that here at the centre.
So remind us, how can we take part in Giving Tuesday?
By visiting here on site at the centre and making a donation and purchase, or visiting us at sparkscience.ca and making a donation online and just really taking advantage of that match today.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you to both of you. Of course, for more information and to buy your tickets to TeleSpark Science Centre or to make that donation, you can always visit that website once again, sparkscience.ca.
Good morning. Definitely looking a little more wintery right now as we take a look at our SkyWatch weather camera brought to you by Action Furnace. Fixed rate or it's free. And this is a live shot from our camera in downtown Calgary. We are seeing some light flurries across the Calgary area. We have a picture of our friend Pete, who Pete's human texted in this picture and said Pete might actually be a husky disguised as a lab because Pete loves the cold and the snow. And so I'm sure that Pete's human will be out walking Pete today as we experience temperatures around minus one, minus two for the afternoon and some light and scattered flurries. If you have any photos of your pup you'd like to share, you can send them in for our Paul Ackerman Real Estate Dog Walking Forecast by texting them to 10 400. Plus one is the temperature at Y Y C International. We have two degrees in Medicine Hat, minus one in Lethbridge. And keeping an eye on this precipitation that's moving through with some light scattered flurries, that rain that transitioned to some snow throughout the morning as our temperature continued to drop and then seeing some of that snowfall exiting our province in the southeast. Calgary will see those scattered flurries throughout the day today. Not a lot of accumulation though. And Lethbridge will be in a similar story, just joining the party a little bit later. will be in a similar story, just joining the party a little bit later. Banff mostly staying out of it as this system is coming really more parallel to the foothills than over the Rockies. Two degrees for that daytime high for today, plus one for tomorrow, and then four on Thursday. And for context, our average high is zero. So we're above our average and above freezing for the next few days. And then we're dropping off for the weekend, minus six for Friday and for Saturday with a cooler overnight value, minus 13 on Friday, and another chance of snow on Friday. But again, more light scattered flurries than we're expecting heavier snowfall on Friday.
Thanks, Jody. And coming up tomorrow on the show, we'll talk to a pharmacist about how to avoid holiday heartburn and get advice on some of the symptoms to watch out for. Plus Realtor Paul Ackerman will tell us the state of the market today and explain the psychology of moving.
Ooh, this is interesting.
Yeah.
And coming up at 5:00, 6:00, and 11:30, we'll have more on the UCP government's plans to fight Ottawa's gun buyback program.
Well, today is Giving Tuesday, and thanks to some very generous supporters of Fear is Not Love, cash donations made today to Toy Mountain will be matched dollar for dollar up to $75,000. And so far, we have collected 1,380 toys, and the combined value of cash and toys now sits at over $126,000. You can make that doubly beneficial cash donation today by going to ctvcalgary.ca.
Pretty good.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Getting there.
I was gonna say, I think we've made a lot of progress this past week. About $76,000 last week and...
Yeah. Goal 800,000. Of course, we'll get there.
Yes.
Fingers crossed.
Especially today. It's a good day to make those donations.
Yes.
Wherever you can.
Exactly. And it is starting to build. So I'm sure we'll get there. Stay away from the snow. We'll see you tomorrow.
Bye-bye.